Today's special meeting, Tuesday, August 29th, 2023. It's being called for order in the absence of the mayor, who sent an email Friday at 6:00 PM that he would be unavailable. We need to appoint someone to chair the meeting tonight. So there is a motion on the floor for someone.
I make a motion that trustee Volter will...
No, that's the court. That's the court. Yeah, chair. Chair the meeting.
Oh, okay. Well, I propose that trustee Brooks perform as the mayor Volter for tonight's meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
First by Thompson, second by Williams. I'll call the roll. Trustee Brooks is present. Trustee Hannah Lewis. Trustee Janelle McFat. Trustee Gina Williams. Present. Okay. Trustee Jewel Thompson.
Present.
And trustee Donna Volter. Present. All right, in the absence... Oh, excuse me. Absent. Present, we also have the village attorney, Mike McBride, and we also have the legislative attorney, Tom Cottler. In the absence of the clerk, is there a motion to appoint someone to record minutes of this special meeting?
I make a motion that we appoint Donna, we want trustee Volter to record the minutes of the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a question that the chairman...
You want to ask the trustee?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's it.
Okay. All right. Trustee Volter, you ready to call this motion?
No, I'm not. Trustee Volter to be in charge of the department. Trustee Williams.
Call the roll.
What about trustee Williams? It's a yes or no. Yes or no. I'm okay. I'm sorry. I don't know what you're going to vote me on. Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson. Trustee Volter. Trustee McFadden. Absent. Trustee Lewis is absent. Mayor Reddick is absent.
All right. Let's move to the pledge of allegiance. All right. Our pledge of allegiance is the blood of the United States of America and the true republic of which is second. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and... Hey. General Congress, let me have a sheet. Okay, the first one looks like Will Anderson. He was assigned to them. Okay. The next one would be Ms. Trust. Chief, do you want to make sure we have a clock today? I have a clock. Actually, I left this light on, so I just want to turn it a little angle. You get started. Go ahead, Ms. Trust. I know it's at 7:13 in the morning. How you doing?
Good evening. My is not on.
You're not on?
Is it my phone?
I want to make sure Ms. Trust is on.
Good evening, everyone.
Tell them Ms. Trust is on. It is on. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Can y'all hear? If we... Maybe we need to get Ms. Trust a bit more loud.
Is it on now?
I think that's the problem.
My name is Mary Trust, and I'm going to take a few minutes of your time so you watch what you do. I'm here tonight because I've got some things cleared up. We are represented in this village by trustees, the mayor, and residents. And the residents paid taxes that we lent the trustees and mayor to govern and the village manager to govern for us. Now, they all have their own duties, but I'm going to tell you, the trustees and all my family, as old as I am, you do not have the power to bully the taxpayers. We have the police for that. If you think I'm doing something wrong or whatever, call the police. You, as trustees, are not the police. I have on my vehicle a village sticker and a state sticker, and it hasn't changed. You have no reason to bully and take pictures of my vehicle. The person that was driving and operating my vehicle thought you were trying to steal the cat-lidded convertible. Now, you are a public official, and you're in a public place, and I can take your picture, and you can take mine if you want to. But you following around my car, my vehicle, taking pictures of it, and then asking why that idea went... Get this, I don't think you know it, but we paid for you to be here. So don't do it. Stop it. Call the police if you think I, as some of my people that operate my vehicles, have done something wrong. And if you don't want your picture taken, don't bother me, because this little camera will pick you up anywhere. And I got a lens that is longer and more strength than this one. And most of you know I am a graveyard, so stop it.
Thank you, Ms. Trust. Ms. Mary Allen Fenton.
Good evening, we are here, trustees. I think it's Mary that has been there, and I'm not here to criticize or be critical of this. I just want you to let me know what I think. I thought the parade was terrible. However, why did we have all these cars at the end of the parade? We didn't... Let me just say this. I appreciate the people who drove their cars at the end of the parade. I appreciate them. However, it was a parade. It was just a bunch of cars. I'm trying to be truthful. I'm just saying the cars weren't decorated. And also, we need some floats, something for the people to cheer at. Have a couple clouds. I'd be a cloud. I mean, just have the headbands for the county members over there.
Okay, you got the mic. You need to like...
Cars adjust to my tone. Love it.
Stay right there. Stay right there.
Very good. Don't take my time.
Yes, sir.
Okay, as I was saying, as far as the parade is concerned, it was okay for me. You did have the music going on there. Congress was here, and you had cars that was filling in for other things, but we didn't know who they were. The trustees, if we didn't know who they were, they just passed by. It was... I don't know if they had names or something on the cars. I just know who anyone was, basically. And you do not need all those cars cheering behind. This is a parade to cheer, and if we start now, we can do floats. I mean, we have a lot of creative people here in the first stop. We can start building up that. Again, I'm just giving my advice. That's number one. And number two is the only way that we can get something with the acoustics, like you said here, because you can watch this on YouTube or Zoom. Can't hear a word you're saying. Don't hear a word you guys are saying. And so, what I do myself, because I don't need them even. I'm the one who put that in. And you have a CD for close passing. It can't press what you guys are saying. So either we aren't... You guys know that I'm here. I can understand what you cannot understand what you guys are saying. Y'all do something about the acoustics. Then note, have one second.
Thank you, Ms. Allen Fenton. If I'm not mistaken, we are working on that. I was at Village Hall last week with the village manager and Eva. We are working on the equipment podcast that would be much better for, I believe, the whole community. We will also be able to broadcast on Channel 4 again. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, the village manager has relocated for the, I guess, like, quarantine now or whatever, for the equipment. So we are working on that. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. Again, do you remember the time I come to a village meeting or a special meeting? I have to say, I'm disturbed. I'm disturbed. I'm disturbed of several things. And since somebody, I'm sure, is going to shorten my time, let me just finish it out. I'm disturbed with the village manager. The village manager has not done a good job. You did too much for her, not to do a good job. You tributated one person, yet still you didn't have a deep plan in place for paying our workers. That's another. That is another. Again, you have failed, but yet still you sit here. You failed with the latter. The budget is the latter. You brought in lawyers and stuff. Wow, well, you didn't bring in a lawyer. The mayor brought in a lawyer. You didn't. You're the village manager. But yet still, you object to the trustees' lawyers that they brought in. You did continuously fail, but yet you sit here. Let me move on, because I know you can't answer. I'm also disturbed at how I, as a resident, am hearing about things that's going on in this village. Over on our double sideline, you have great big huge tractors and trailers and vehicles that I've never even seen before. What is going on, village manager? None of us know. I called trustees. They didn't know. And I know I can't ask you, because you don't even want to have a meeting with me. But things like that going on in our village and the residents not knowing about it is not acceptable. I don't like to say I don't know. I don't like to say that. I've been there 35 years, and things is going on in this village. We all need to know what is going on, and especially the trustees. So here we start all over again with the trustees not being told about different things. This is a dirt thug over there. They got this great tractor and things. I couldn't know this story. A lot of people have seen that. But yet still, you have yet to say anything about it. Ain't saying nothing about it. This is a community person. How come we don't hear anything from this thing about what is going on event-wise for the residents? It took trustee Volter to put that on next door so that the residents know that there were even events going on with the parade. It's sad. It's really, really sad, and it's not acceptable. Not to mention what this village looks like. I talked with some of the trustees, and I think what needs to be done is you and myself, along with some trustees, we need to do a tour. You need... I need to know that you see what is going on or what is not going on in this village. You didn't want to tell me what your... what your job description is.
Brett, Brett, I got a question. Get that to him. I'll let you go on.
Excuse me. I should have known that you know what is going on in this village. I never see you around. So we're going to get together and do a tour so we can make sure that you see how we live here. Thank you.
Next would be Mr. Roy Williams.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Have something I'd like to read, so, okay?
Yes, sir. Yeah, just...
Pick it up. Pick it up. Take the mic. Take it off.
You may have to pick it up. I got to bring it up to you. There you go. Yes, sir.
All right. This is about turning your face. And our lobbyist, Frank Bass. These are the very people who have built a coalition with local counties, state, and federal partners. Attorney Fane has represented University Park very well in and out of court over the last few years. Aqua was tried cutting water off all throughout University Park, and she's been very diligent in blocking them from doing that. She's been very effective. And she's done that for the purpose and determination for our this crisis, this lead water and condemned. Frank Bass is lobbying for University Park in Springfield for political support, and this is our team. We're in discovery stage of this legal process. After four years of, you know, change what's working for University Park makes no sense. And Mr. Brooks, Donna, Jewel, and Gina, people with vision know the case of the people of University Park versus Aqua Water Corporation has state as well as national ramifications. Attorney Fane is best prepared, most experienced, and has a strategy with partners. The board of trustees should be in total support of her. And Frank Bass as well. This is our team. And that's what I have to say about that. It makes absolutely no sense. You want to change somebody who's been doing what they've been doing for us all this time. And I hope this is not a personal thing.
But it's not.
But it's been... She's been fighting Aqua Water for cutting that water off. She's making sure that every three months, Aqua says, oh, water's green. And what happened? They fail every three months.
Yeah. Mr.... Mr. Williams, just make sure you talk to us. You know, we're willing to accept your comments tonight. Just so you know, Neil Fane resigned. She sent a letter. Mr. Frank Bass, I think the trustee wants to comment on it. They'll be willing to bring it up during the meeting. But to ask you, she resigned.
That's really unfortunate for us.
Yes, it is. She left a beautiful letter, and I'm going to report your response because her and I always had a good relationship. So if you would like to address that, we're the trustee outside the general conference.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll leave something to the village.
Yes, sir.
Hold on. Do you mind having a coffee? You got a coffee? Yes, I'll get you a coffee.
For the record. Yes, sir. And the last person would be Pete Litch.
Yes, yes. Look at us, everybody. My comment was also about Attorney Fane, but like you said, she has already resigned, so I guess my comment now becomes null and void. Because my comment about her was that she helped us with Aqua. She has stood up for us, and she has stood in place there to represent us and keep Aqua off of wax. And on the agenda, I noticed that we were about to fire her. But since she has resigned, I guess this becomes null and void. So...
At 8,000 dollars a month, she got free.
Freedom ain't free. So I guess that's all I have to say. I was talking to you in the chat.
Ladies and gentlemen, please reserve your comments during comments time and address the board. There's no reason to talk to each other if we can't do it with decor. If you continue to do so, whoever it is, you'd be asked to leave.
Okay. So, General Congress, thank you, Chief, for going there. All right. So we move to business. E1. Motion to terminate the lobbyist slash consulting contract with Frank Brad, Bass, and the director, village manager, and the village attorney to issue a notice of termination to Frank Bass and his lobbyist slash consultant contract. Is there a motion? First by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Williams. Questions, comments? Hearing none. Same as clerk. Trustee Volter with call the roll.
Roll call. Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Volter.
Both sides.
Motion passed. Okay. Trustee McFadden absent. Trustee Lewis absent. Mayor Reddick absent. Motion passed.
We are on to E2. Motion to terminate Nina Fane as special counsel and direct the village manager, village attorney, to issue a notice of termination to Nina Fane of her agreement for services as special counsel. Is there a motion? First by Thompson. Second? Second by Williams. Question, comments, concerns? Let me also say, I think, if I'm not mistaken legally, though, she did resign, it's something that we have to do anyway, legislatively wise. I gave you if she resigned. So that was what I recorded. Go ahead, John. Roll call. Trustee Lewis.
I just want to say on behalf of attorney Nina Fane, she was a very good person, and I gave you a chance to talk to her at the back of school fest. But however, as far as the Aqua situation, she came here twice at a town meeting, and she came and I was asked to board. I don't recall her saying that she kept our water on. She did a slide show. She did a power plant. But there were times when we would be on those live calls, and she was not present. And I just feel that there was not enough being done by this Fane as far as Aqua. I don't even remember her saying one time that she met with the president of Aqua. I don't remember her saying she had to come to Springfield to lobby for us. There were a lot of things that I had questions about. There were people out here who wore their teeth to cut off or had it cut out, and they called me, and I got on and did three-way calls with the Illinois Congress Commission. They did not mention her, not one time. And I know it's only been reason that trustee Lewis has began bringing those ICFC complaint forms around. This is something that shouldn't have been done a long time ago. And the table should be set up right over there in that corner where people can fill us out every single time they come to me, because we have to get those complaints in order to move the deed. Now, when Aqua moved to another suburb, had a water situation back in July, I saw the president of Aqua on the news. He had a bad idea, and we're four years with bad water. Four years of crisis waiting. But y'all talking about all the great things about Ms. Fane and low again. I'm not trying to say anything there, but these people have bravely took our money, and we're still stuck with these bills, stuck with bad water, and no one is doing anything. There's not enough noise being made. So unfortunately, I wish her well, but I think more could have been done.
Trustee... Trustee Thompson.
Yes. So it's not her turn. This is business. So when Ms. Fane was here last time, I asked her what was her role in helping us with our water situation. She never defined her role. Then I asked her, who was our advocate in this problem? She said the state's attorney. So if the state's attorney is the advocate, and she can't find her role, then it's a waste of money. And then we have other advocates. We have the South Suburban Management Manager. They have lobbyists, and people are working on water problems in the Southland region. So we don't need to spend money for no reason. We don't need to waste money. It's my personal way off.
My personal pad off.
Thank you.
All right. Trustee Volter, go ahead and call the roll.
Roll call. Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Volter.
Both sides.
Trustee McFadden absent. Trustee Lewis absent. Mayor Reddick absent. Motion passed.
All right. And like I said, if anyone has a comment or wants to speak to a trustee, you know, you can see them at the meeting. Usually after public comments, this portion is, and I will last explain, this portion is considered village business. This is a public meeting, but the board is interacting with each other to conduct the village business according to the meetings. For the general public, I'm about to read off the names. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven statues. The statues, when I read it off, the statue of the purpose of these five statues, this is for transparency. Once again, you should know with the voting board, transparency is always allowing the board to all to appoint members to these committees and commissions. Once again, if you have a question about that, please speak to those trustees or myself after the board reading. But the numbers you're reading are... But the numbers you're reading are basically, they're striking and allowing trustees as well to make recommendations to bring somebody and appoint them to the committees and commissions.
One.
All right, second, E3, first, second, third reading. An order submitting section 260-6 of chapter 260 of title 8 of part 2 of the codified ordinance of the Village University Park regarding two appointments, is there a motion?
So hold.
First by Thompson.
Second.
Second by, I'll give to culture. Okay, trustee culture, call Rome.
Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson?
Both sides.
Trustee culture?
Both sides.
Trustee McFadden, absent, trustee Lewis, absent, Mayor Rudes, absent, motion passed.
Also the judge.
Representative, that's order this, order this number, 02, 023, 13.
Okay, I was about to say clerk, okay, okay. Okay. 02, 02, 3, 13.
02, 023, dash, 13.
All right, just so everyone know that, yeah, Matt Clerk did not, I suppose she could not be here. She wished she could, but she talked to trustee culture, we got it all set. That's even better, if it works like that. We all get it done. E4s, first, second, third reading, order submitting section 271-02 of chapter 271 of title 8 of part 2 of the codified ordinance of the Village University Park with regard to appointments, is there a motion?
So hold.
Second.
I'll go with trustee Williams and Thompson, second. Trustee culture, ready, you ready?
Call Rome, trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson?
Both sides.
Trustee culture?
Both sides.
Trustee McFadden, absent, trustee Lewis, absent, Mayor Rudes, absent, motion passed. And that would be ordinance number 02, 023, dash, 14.
E5, section, or E5, first, second, third reading of the order submitting section 283-01 of chapter 283 of title 8, part 2 of the codified ordinance of the Village University Park with regard to appointments, is there a motion?
So hold.
Move by Thompson, second, by culture, call Rome.
Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson?
Both sides.
Trustee culture? Trustee McFadden, absent, trustee Lewis, absent, Mayor Rudes, absent, motion passed. That would be ordinance number 02, 023, dash, 15.
Okay, E6, first, second, third reading of the order submitting section 291-2 of chapter 291 of title 8, part 2 of the codified ordinance of the Village University Park with regard to appointments, is there a motion?
So hold.
Second.
First by Williams, second by Thompson, call Rome.
Call Rome, trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson?
Both sides.
Trustee culture? Trustee McFadden, absent, trustee Lewis, absent, Mayor Rudes, absent, motion passed. That would be ordinance number 02, 023, dash, 16.
E7, first, second, third reading of an order submitting 292-2 of chapter 292 of title 8 of part 2 of codified ordinance of the Village University Park with regards to ordinance. Oh, excuse me, appointment, is there a motion?
So hold.
Then I'll say.
First by culture, second by Thompson, call Rome.
Call Rome, trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson?
Both sides.
Trustee culture?
Trustee McFadden, absent, trustee Lewis, absent, Mayor Rudes, absent, motion passed.
That would be ordinance number 02, 023, dash, 17.
And the last one is E8. First, second, third reading of an order submitting 29601 of chapter 296 of title 8 of part 2 of the codified ordinance of the Village University Park with regards to appointments, is there a motion?
So hold.
Second.
First by Thompson, second by Williams.
Call Rome, trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson?
Both sides.
Trustee culture?
Trustee McFadden, absent, trustee Lewis, absent, Mayor Rudes, absent, motion passed.
And that would be ordinance number 02, 023, dash, 17.
Right. Okay, F will be executive session, excuse me, F will be executive session, and if I get a motion, I'll read it off. Transparency, we got F1 will be for appointments, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dis- or certain employees. F2 will deal with the collective negotiating matters. And F3 will be reference to litigation, pending and probable, is there a motion?
So hold.
Second.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read a... Yeah, can I get a motion and I'll read off the statute number that we have behind. So hold by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Williams. The first one will deal with appointments, appointments, compensation, and discipline, that's gonna be chapter 5 of ILCS 120 slash 2C1. F2 will be dealing with collective negotiating matters, chapter 5 of ILCS 120 slash 2C dash 2, excuse me, 2. And then the final one, in reference to litigation, probably, opinion, is gonna be the same one, ILCS 5120 slash 2C11, for the record. And then after that, ladies and gentlemen, we will adjourn.
Call Rome.
Yeah, let's let it know, we will be adjourned, so when you come out, we'll call it back into session to go back, but we will not be taking any action either. So if you, if you, if you leave, you're free to go home, that's my point. I don't want you standing out there afterwards.
Oh, we'll wait.
Okay, I did a motion, and that was Thompson, and then Williams.
Call Rome. Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson?
Both sides.
Trustee culture?
Trustee McFadden, absent, trustee Lewis, absent, Mayor Rudes, absent, motion passed.
Go on, take second and second.
So, the general public will wait outside while we discuss these matters.